All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the special study session of the City of Daly City Council this Monday, February 25th. Tonight, we are going to have a discussion about the proposed legislation, Senate Bill 281, the Cow Palace Joint Powers Authority Board. So I'm going to turn it over in a few minutes to Ms. Zimmerman and to Ms. Walbe for a brief presentation. I understand we have a couple of speaker cards. We don't, normally don't have public comment, but because you are our guest today, I'm certainly going to annotate your comment because you've made the trek out here, and we do appreciate that. Okay? So let's start. Ms. Zimmerman, you have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. This is a special study session. I'm going to give you just sort of a brief overview for the council discussion in regards to Senate Bill 281. Senate Bill 281 was introduced by Senator Scott Wiener. It is also known as the Cow Palace Joint Powers Authority Bill. The bill has just been introduced February 13th, 2019. In summary, the bill, proposed legislation, bans the sales of guns and ammunition at the Cow Palace located in Daly City. The bill also authorizes the transfer of the 68-acre parcel from the California 1A District Agricultural Association, also known as Cow Palace, to form the Cow Palace Joint Powers Authority. The authority, the Cow Palace Joint Powers Authority, also has the control over the Cow Palace site if this legislation were to be passed, and will be responsible for the disposition and contracts, including construction, housing, and mixed-use development. By way of background, as you all may be aware, the Cow Palace parcel divides the state into district agricultural associations for purposes of holding, among other things, fairs and expositions. The 1A District Agricultural Association governs the district at the Cow Palace property. Summary points to note in this bill is effective January 2nd, 2020. The bill authorizes the city and county of San Francisco, the city of Daly City, the county, and an appointment from the governor to appoint the members to form the Cow Palace Joint Powers Authority. The Cow Palace consists of 68 acres, predominantly situated in the city of Daly City, and borders against San Francisco. One of the things I'd like to point out to the council in terms of this consideration is the board itself assumes all the duties of the 1A District Agricultural Association. The board is consistent of three members appointed by the city and county of San Francisco, three members appointed by the city of Daly City, one member of the board appointed by the county of San Mateo, and one member appointed by the governor. This is consistent of an eight-person board. This board has the authority, will have the authority, to enter into contracts, agreements for the demolition of existing structures on the property, enter into contracts or agreement for the disposition and development, and also have discretion and may establish local minimum zoning standards and be the lead agency for the California Environmental Quality Act. That's sort of, basically, it's just an authorization to create this disposition for purposes of disposition. We bring this before you because essentially SB 281 is referred to committee for further analysis. It's only been introduced. Our city lobbyist, Bill DePlessis, has engaged Scott Wiener's office, and the office has solicited input from the city council in regards to certain provisions of this particular bill, SB 281. To the staff report, I've also attached the bill in its entirety. We are here to answer any questions in regards to the bill. The city manager is here as well, if you have any concerns or would like to open up discussions for further discussion on SB 281.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any questions before I turn to some of the speaker cards? Any questions? No? Okay. Let me ask Lori Marshall. Lori?
Welcome.
Hi. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. My name is Lori Marshall, and I'm the CEO at the 1A District Ag Association, also the Cow Palace Arena and Event Center. And I just wanted to give you a little information about the facility. The Cow Palace operates as a year-round facility that hosts community-serving events of various cultural, educational, sporting, hobbyist, emergency training activities, and those are just a few of the lists, that many things that we have there. Some of our recent notable clients that we've had, Salesforce, Intel, just a couple years ago, we did Taste of NFL when the Super Bowl was in town, Facebook, Oracle, Live Nation, Cirque du Soleil, and two of our very longtime clients and renters, the Great Dickens Fair and the Contra Costa, or the Golden Gate Kennel Club, which have been there for over 20 years. The Cow Palace property also provides important space for an array of first responder trainings, such as we work with Daly City Police Department with your motor patrol and SWAT teams, and they do training out there on our facility. The Daly City Fire Department, also joint trainings with the county of San Mateo. And then also, we have done some staging with San Mateo OES for the fires up in Sutter and Neuba. And we also work very closely with SFMTA as the site for where all the bus drivers get trained out on our facility. So that's something else that we do out there. And we just want also to, everyone to recognize and remember that the Cow Palace is such a valuable asset in the local cities and counties as a resource for an emergency site. So if there was a major disaster, we have an evacuation center for humans as well as pets and livestock, which many places may not be able to accommodate that. Also staging areas for disaster situations. The facility is equipped with so many resources that may not be available at other sites because we do have indoor outdoor, we do have showers that maybe other places don't have since we've had sporting events there, and also pens, livestock areas, and things like that. Also, additionally, the DA is home of the Grand National Rodeo, which is celebrating its 73rd year this year, historic event that brings so many youth from all over California and neighboring states exhibit their livestock and continue with those traditions and education of agriculture. I have brought some information. It's the 2015 Economic Impact Study that is specific to the Cow Palace that's been done by California Department of Food and Ag that will give you some information about the facility and what it brings to the community. And so we just wanted to, in summary, say that the Cow Palace staff continues to develop new relationships with clients, bringing in new events and gatherings to the venue. And we're very active with events, facility upgrades, improvements, along with planning for future, and that's a priority for us. We're always striving to create a wonderful place for our community to gather and continuously willing to look at the concerns of the community, and we look forward to working together with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. Let me call up Mara Cop. Ms. Cop, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council members, for the opportunity. CEO Marshall mentioned some of our events, and there are many, many more events that take place throughout the year on a recurring basis or new events. So I won't repeat the same ones that she already has spoken to. The last event I went to was the Reptile Show, and the public just really loved it, and the vendor was very, very happy with us. As you know, for 70 years, the Cow Palace has been an important Bay Area and state resource and event center. We continue to be a very vital asset for public, corporate, private events, and trainings. And CEO Marshall represented just some of the events that come there. We are a venue for small businesses, as well as union staff, ticket staff, ticket takers, ushers, security, medical staff, maintenance, repairs, special skills. So we do provide a lot of individual, small business opportunities, as well as for union members. The broad range of events provides opportunities for people from different social, ethnic, economic backgrounds to have options, to mix with one another, for families and individuals. I think this is really critical because this allows people who normally would not have a chance to mingle and talk to each other to have some kind of a contact with also the tremendous variety of events that come to us. We are the middle category in the region. We are not the large arena, and we are not the small community centers, but we fit right in the middle to provide these opportunities for the public. We receive no public funds, none at all. We earn all of our own operating revenues. We have no debts. We have significant savings, which we continue to put into improvements and upgrades. We are an important regional and state emergency resource center, and CEO Marshall mentioned that. We are very unique in where we're located, between two parks, between two freeways, near the airport, if the bridges were to go down. Because of the kind of complex of buildings we have, we can separate children and elderly. Because of the restaurants, we have generators, we have refrigeration. Because we're also a sports facility, we have showers. You could never recreate a facility like this, not only for San Francisco, or the region, or the state. It's a very, very important asset. We recently also met with the San Mateo Red Cross to do a walkthrough, you know, to identify all this. So we continue to contribute to the Bay Area and the community and the state. As the president of the Cow Palace Board Directors, I'm very, very proud of our progress, our financial stability, our leadership and our staff. Thank you very much, and our board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cop. Kevin Peter Patterson.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members, for allowing me to speak today. I feel that, as the previous speakers have said, that the Cow Palace does have a vital role to play in the community. And as a professional who has produced an event there for the last 20 years, I thought I would give you my viewpoints on its significance, not only in terms of what it provides immediately here, but also in the larger regional context. My name is Kevin Patterson. I'm here representing the Coalition to Save the Cow Palace, which was formed in 2008, thus the name, and wish to further our continuing support of the Cow Palace as an important and lasting venue in the region. My family and I have produced the Great Dickens Christmas Fair there for the last 19 years, and we have found the staff to be consistently professional, and we have had a very good run there for the last 19 years cooperating with them and bringing over 70,000 people each year to the Great Dickens Christmas Fair. In addition to the total of over 200,000 guests that come to the Cow Palace each year, there are thousands more who utilize it as their way to connect with their community and express their many talents. They are passionate about theater arts, or dog breeding, martial arts, cheerleading, trade shows, rodeo, or Victorian living history, and they live in Daly City, in Fremont, Santa Rosa, and throughout the Bay Area. The Cow Palace provides a place for individuals from every walk of life to share passions that may be very different from their professions. It is a place where they get to perform, to present, to learn, and interact. It can, and it should do much, much more of this. The Cow Palace needs upgrades, and it needs to change with the times. Given its unique design, with over 200,000 square feet of exhibition space and 14,000-seat arena, it is important to the Bay Area as a highly accessible, affordable, mid-level event facility. To destroy it with a chunk of housing jammed into an already dense urban environment is short-sighted. Some housing, perhaps, but not destroying the entire very critical and important facility. Levi's Stadium, or the upcoming Chase Center, are very different, extremely expensive, A-level facilities with high costs for producers as well as ticket buyers. We need the Cow Palace because of where it is, who it serves, because of its storied history, and most importantly, because in the years ahead, we will need more places for people to gather and learn and celebrate on a community level. It may be called the Cow Palace, but it is really the People's Palace. Furthermore, medium-sized sporting events and small concerts find the Cow Palace an affordable and right-sized facility. The big-name rock and roll tours have moved on to purpose-built facilities like Shoreline Amphitheater, but there are many, and will be many, community-based concerts and shows that cannot afford the Bay Area if the Cow Palace is gone. Myself and other producers and regular users form the Coalition to Save the Cow Palace. We see that it will be and can be an important support, necessary for us to provide an important support system for the management of the Cow Palace, and that is what we intend to do. We hope that the 281 bill does not result in a JPA, that it simply results in the canceling of the gun shows, which we feel like is appropriate and overdue. But we feel like the JPA is an expensive and complex, long-term, unnecessary bit of bureaucratic exercise that will not achieve the goals that I think are reasonable for development in the immediate vicinity of Daly City, as well as the expanded outreach that I refer to in my remarks. I thank you very much, and I appreciate, again, the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. So those are the speaker cards that I have in total. So first, I want to thank you all for coming and sharing your input and your thoughts and your feelings, really, about what is going to be an important issue for Daly City and neighborhood San Francisco and the state to really tackle. I don't think we're going to be making any big decisions today. It's really about informational and providing input, and because we are a governing body, we can discuss and maybe have some questions about how we're going to go forward. But again, I don't really think we're going to be moving one way or another today in terms of a direction. But I do think the council may have some questions they might be interested in having some answers to. And so with that, I will leave it to, open the floor up to discussion, and if you have any questions, council member Manalo.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. With this bill, I think, you know, last year around the gun shows in particular, you know, the council did pass a resolution to support banning the gun shows, particularly because it's right there by the Bay Shore Community Schools and Community Center, right by the children. So in that manner, you know, that's something that, you know, for me, I feel still strongly about, and hopefully that doesn't occur there anymore because of really the young people speaking. You know, we had high school students come out and really advocate, saying this is something they do not want to see from Jefferson High School, from Westmore High School. And just see that advocacy from young people, most importantly, the Bay Shore community. You know, to see this again arise is extremely important for our community. So in that matter, I definitely, you know, applaud that this is back on deck with, at the state, because, you know, we need this passed in that manner. But the question I do have around the governance piece within what is stated and proposed, it says three members from SF, three members from Daly City, one from the county, one from the governor, was from staff. I'd like to know exactly how much of the land particularly is in Daly City?
That's awesome.
And then how much is in San Francisco? Just understanding that dynamic, and do we have a...
Map?
I don't have a map, but it's 68.
68?
Yeah. It's 6,800 acres. Yeah. And it's predominantly in Daly City. The only part that's in San Francisco is sort of a sliver, and I don't have the exact, but it's a sliver that's facing Geneva, which is the corner of the parking lot. You can visualize, there's cars parked there right now. So it's a very small...
So sliver, so you would say about 80% of it?
No. I read something as 2.37 acres belongs to San Francisco.
That probably is accurate.
So more than 75%?
More than 80%.
More than 80%?
I can give you the exact.
So, I mean, I don't know where this is, but that's my concern around the governance piece of it.
Yeah, me too.
And that, given that majority of it, as you mentioned, thank you for that clarification, Mr. Vice Mayor and City Attorney, that I would like to see more representation since majority of it, over 80%, is in Daly City.
That's just my take when looking at it. I know that, I don't know, it's being formed in a more collaborative effort, but, you know, for the community, the representation should reflect really, you know, how much is within what jurisdiction.
Yeah.
And so that's what I see offhand.
Just to follow up on Councilmember Manalo's question, when, with respect to the gun, the banning of the gun shows, my two-part question is, I know that Governor Brown had vetoed that. Do we, what rationale did he give for vetoing it? And is Governor Newsom made any representations on what he would do to that?
Well, this is just my take on it. So Governor Newsom did support the gun legislation that was previously proposed, that was vetoed by Governor Brown. And my understanding in the veto, he took the position that it should be the Cow Palace Board that makes a decision as to the shows that are out there. So that's why he vetoed the bill. And I believe he might have appointed or reappointed certain members of the board, and they felt, he felt that essentially, they were the, they were, like, the landlords are overseeing it, they should govern it, and that's where the veto comes from.
And then, when, the board that we're talking about, when you say that three members from Daly City, is that three publicly elected members?
So that is not clear in the legislation. It just says three, three members from Daly City appointed by the city council. That's it.
Oh. Okay.
There isn't much, there isn't much, and I believe that goes for the Board of Supervisors as well. And one appointed by the governor and one appointed by the county of San Mateo. So it's an eight-person board.
I see. Okay.
And just to be clear, I mean, you're probably aware of this, I mean, the JPA is an arm of the state, so their interest is with the state, and you, essentially, if this were to pass, you would ideally have people from Daly City who would be, have the Daly City interests in mind.
Okay, Mr. Giovanni, I saw your hand up. Go ahead.
That's okay. Vice Mayor first.
Just go ahead.
It's okay. Yeah. In reference to the equity issue of the board, I have to agree with Councilmember Manalo, because that's definitely not an equitable issue in the legislation. My question is for representation, for any sort of collaboration on this property. And definitely, the, people know my history, the gun issue has always been gun violence prevention, so I am looking forward to hopefully that being a piece of however this works to stop the, those gun shows in the neighboring Bay Shore and Visitation Valley. My question is, is the housing piece, it appears that the legislation, I may have misread or whatever, that most of it is proposing only housing in this legislation. Did I read that correctly?
Yes, they're discussing about the development of affordable housing, possibly mixed use with affordable housing.
But that's, that's it?
Yes.
So for me, that doesn't really echo what the Bay Shore community has in the past or present is reflective of what they want. And they had originally had their own committee before with Phyllis Rezey, and they had already gone up to Sacramento a few times on what they wanted and proposed plans. So I think we need their input as well in this matter, to make sure that they have what they want because they need services, or at least, you know, steer the ship. And I'd like to have a lot of input from that community. So for me, that's like really important, because they live there. So that's, that's key. But how this large part in Daly City, then we need to provide the services. So currently, we get reimbursed by the state for our fire and police, is that correct? When they respond to the...
I believe so, yes.
Okay. And then how would the funding come out on that? We don't know.
I'm not too clear on that.
Okay. That's it for right now. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, Governor Newsom has made it specifically clear that his top priority is housing. And I heard the saying, I heard that the term tonight, already dense. I have to disagree with that because we have a problem with housing, not only in Daly City, but it's a regional problem. And every city is trying their best to deal with this issue, and the governor also realizes that. Then I want to address the issue of the Bay Shore. The Bay Shore feels that they are not being taken care of. The Bay Shore does not have any retail, any places to go shopping.
That's right.
And that has to be corrected. Many times during the past few years, we've had gun backs at the Cow Palace. We've tried to ban gun sales. I'm wondering if the folks at the Cow Palace is listening to our community. They don't want guns. I believe that that was the impetus to bring this bill about, Senate Bill 281. Now, the only other issue I have with this particular bill that I would like a further clarification, they're talking about the banning of guns on that property. I would like to see that they make a provision to allow guns on the property as per Penal Code, Section 830 and 832. What those sections deal with is any law enforcement officer in the performance of his or her duties can have a gun. If they say no guns on the property, then what are our officers supposed to do? Stop at the gate, leave their guns in the car, and walk on to the Cow Palace grounds? So I think that needs to be addressed. I worked out the numbers as per the acreage, and I see that Daly City, the part that rests on Daly City amounts to 94%.
Oh.
So I think that needs to be, as Councilmember Manalo reiterated, make sure that we have representation on this JPA if it comes to fruition. Now, I received this information tonight regarding the financials, and I'm looking back, and it looks like 2015 was a great year. But I don't know what happened in 2016. I don't know about 2017, and if this information, is it sustainable? Is it sustainable? So I'd hate to lose an event center. I, because of the history that this place has, I'd hate to lose it. But we have to come to some realization of our circumstances today, whether we can still have an event center, where we still have more housing, where we still have more retail. I think this is what it's all about, so that it just doesn't remain an event center. A good idea, I've heard when meeting with the folks at the Cow Palace, OES Center, oh, that's an outstanding idea. Do we have that now? That would be great. So I think coming together and discussing all of this can help us as we move along later on in the future. But PC 830 and PC 832 was my top priority about gun possession. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Rudolph McQuillan, you have any comments?
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious from the Cow Palace representation. Is there like a future vision plan of the Cow Palace? I know that we were talking about staying relevant with the times and also communities of the Bay Shore. Have you all been working with anybody in terms of like future developments, renovation, retail?
Lori, did you want to answer that, or Ms. Cop?
I'm just curious.
If not, it's okay. We'll find the answers out later, but maybe that's something to keep in mind.
Oh, okay.
No problem.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah. I think, as mentioned, that this area, you know, it's provided an event place for... for a long time, but there's also, you know, opportunity around it, and it's been echoed through the Bay Shore community around what amenities they want to see. And it's really around, how can we have a collaborative process? You know, it's in Daly City, how do you work together to see how some of the community needs could be addressed, and also find opportunities that are responsible economic tools to also progress the city of Daly City? So I mean, that's kind of where I see it. I think there's ways to most definitely benefit our Bay Shore community first and foremost, but also see how it can also provide, you know, this maybe an economic driver as well as housing in that fashion. It was mentioned in there that was a possibility of mixed use. It doesn't say anything around not having event center, right? So it's around really talking about what the needs are, and yeah, prioritizing and seeing how we can work together. Because it is, as mentioned, there's a regional issue around, you know, providing more housing opportunities, but also we have to look at the balance of, okay, what are the needs of the existing residents there? And then also our city. Our city, you know, this is probably one of the largest areas in the city of Daly City that, you know, we've been trying to work through, and even prior to my time, you know, and now, now and towards the future, you know, four generations forward. And so it's not something easy that will be done in a short period of time, but we hope that as we work together, this is something that is, will benefit the community entirely, and that a positive redevelopment opportunity that will help the city of Daly City and the community. So I see it as how do we work together?
Go ahead, Mr. Giovanni.
I just have a quick question for our city attorney. I believe in our presentation we have with the Economic Development Gentlemen, there's 330 employees that are currently employed at the Cow Palace. Are they considered our Daly's, obviously, since it's in our jurisdiction, they're employed in Daly City, according to that report, right? We don't know how many are part-time or...
I believe so.
Yeah. So if we could find that breakdown on job loss and maybe work together. So, but I have to agree with the councilwoman that we need to work together and think about what is it the Bay Shore wants, and really make sure that they're involved, and they have lacked for so long. And the mayor as well, and vice mayor, and Councilmember Rod, I think we're in agreement at that, and that they have to have a seat at the table and an input on this as well. Thank you.
Any other comments? No? Okay. Well, I think we would, we're going to need more information, obviously, and I don't think we're going to make a specific direction unless I hear otherwise. And then we will continue to discuss, receive input from the community, and also you folks, and we'll see where it goes from there. Okay? Go ahead.
So good evening, Mayor and members of the council, and thank you to our attorney, and I'm not doing that because we do that now, but for your history, because I know you were involved with Leland Yee's bill that did not pass, but I appreciate your history. But circling back to the original presentation, our lobbyist, Bill DePlessis, is seeking direction from council. And I know that the mayor had stated that right now, we're not ready to do that. But I am hearing that, should this bill pass, we might want to modify the language. And so I'm just asking, can I relay that information to Mr. DePlessis?
Yeah, absolutely.
That we're not comfortable with it the way it's written?
Yes.
Okay.
Agreed?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
Do we have the provisions for Penal Code Section 830 and 832?
All right. That's included.
And then I think Councilmember Manalo, if this were to go forward, we would request more representation in...
The governance section, correct.
Governance section.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor.
And they're not comfortable with just the mixed use language. Has to imply more, but I'd like to see the input of the Bay Shore people.
Do we know what is the next, is there a next date or next step that we need to look at?
So it's referred over to committee, is my understanding, and it is referred to the Food and Ag Committee. They don't have the exact date, but it looks like it's going in around March 19th for the next reading. So in the event that the direction, not necessarily direction, but some of the input from the council, the city manager can discuss with our lobbyists, certain aspects of the provisions, that would be the time to do it prior going to committee.
Sounds good. Any other comments?
But Mayor, about the councilmember Rod, the input that he asked about the...
Yeah.
The future, okay.
Yeah. Okay, if none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. We're going to start our next meeting in about 10 minutes.